Hey, good morning, everyone. It's Tuesday, November 1st. The time is 9:31 a.m. I'd like to call to order our meeting. And Erica, can you do the roll call?
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter?
Here.
Commissioner Odeoricio? Commissioner Baca?
Here. If you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Just need a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion passes five to zero. So, good morning, everyone. We begin this morning by highlighting, we have some proclamations. We're going to start first with National Adoption Month across Adams County and the country. So, in a moment, we'll learn more about the incredible work of our Human Services Department and what they're doing. But first, who am I going to give this one to? Okay. Commissioner Pinter, could you please read the proclamation into the record?
Yeah, happy to. National Adoption Month is November 2022. Whereas each month, an average of 32 abused and neglected children in the care of Adams County Human Services are waiting for a loving, nurturing, and permanent home. And whereas these children are not the newborns most people picture when they think of adoption, generally, they are older boys and girls and teenagers who may have unique medical, psychological, or physical needs. And whereas nearly all of these children have special needs because of the physical, mental, or emotional disabilities, because they must be placed in a sibling group, or because they are minorities or school-aged children. And whereas these children need extra patience and support to help them overcome previous hardships. And whereas, as a result of the partnership between Adams County and the 17th Judicial District Court, Adams County anticipates finalizing 120 adoptions in 2022. And whereas there are families able and willing to adopt children who have special needs, and whereas it is important to stress that disability, low income, or unmarried status does not preclude the right to adopt. And whereas children waiting for adoptive parents and families who adopted these children require and deserve community and public agency support. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado proclaim November 2022 as National Adoption Month. And the local courts of Adams County will open their doors on National Adoption Day, Friday, November 18th, to finalize the adoptions of local children and join other organizations to celebrate all adoptions. And it is signed by all of us.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. So, I saw many from our Human Services Department. Will Marie please approach the podium? Good morning. So, thank you for the work that you do. Can you please share the importance of this issue and how Human Services and you are working to secure lifelong connections for children and families?
Absolutely. It's extremely important. We have to find permanency for children whose parental rights have been terminated. The outcomes for the children who do not find permanency are not good. And so, finding one important person, one important family for them throughout the life of our involvement can make all the difference for them and their ability to contribute to society as they grow older. We're so excited to have an in-person National Adoption Day on Friday, November 18th, at the Adams County Justice Center. We'll be celebrating the adoption of 13 children by 10 families. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the staff who have worked so diligently over the past year, not only to find permanency for these children, but for the 86 children who have been adopted this year so far.
If you guys would like to stand?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioners? Commissioner Tedesco?
Yeah, so, National Adoption Day. You guys are amazing. Let me just tell you that, you know, I'm sure everybody already knows and is probably tired of hearing this, but I have an adoptive child. My aunt was a caseworker in Denver. Name was Trixie Ramirez, and she's since retired, but she had a knack for placing children and eventually throughout her career placed numerous amounts of Native American kids. So, we always knew the importance of a caseworker and what they do in the department and how they handled it and how they treated it. I was very, very lucky in getting the family that I had and the care that I had and the upbringing I had. And to be here today, sitting in this seat, celebrating the work that you do on a daily basis is a tremendous honor for me, and I thank you all very much for everything that you do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other Commissioners? Okay. Thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate your service and look forward to seeing you on Friday at the National Adoption Day Ceremony. Okay, so also this month, we are proud to observe Veterans Day and thank all those among us who, despite the risk and sacrifice, raise their hand to serve and defend this beautiful country. Our veterans, active-duty service members, guardsmen, and reservists. Your service has helped keep our country and its citizens safe and free. Commissioner Tedesco, please make it official by reading the proclamation into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Proclamation, Veterans Day, November 11th, 2022. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the Armed Forces have been vital in maintaining our freedoms and way of life. And whereas tens of millions of Americans who have served in the Armed Forces of the United States during the past century. And whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the Armed Forces during the past century. And whereas our county is home to more than 28,000 veterans, 2,000 active-duty military, and 1,700 National Guard and reservists and their families. And whereas our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others. And whereas their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States is founded can never fail to inspire us. And whereas our veterans understand the important task before the American servicemen and women now keeping watch. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado proclaims November 1st, 2022, as Veterans Day in Adams County and encourages all people in our county to acknowledge and honor the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights. I'm hoping that that was a typo and it's supposed to be November 11th. Just checking. That's what it says.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Comments from Commissioners? Mr. Tedesco?
Madam Chair, I apologize. Thank you very much. So, as a veteran, it's a very meaningful day. I think, you know, this entire month of November is very meaningful for me because of every aspect. Adoption Day, now Veterans Day. And I just want to say that the idea of our military and what they're going through, especially in this state of our world, we need to be behind those that are in the service and their families and especially the children that are back home, missing their parents, whether it be their mom or their dad in the military, and other family members. And we need to be cognizant of that, and we need to thank those veterans for sacrificing all that they do, and especially the families sacrificing their togetherness to support our country. So, thank you very much to all our veterans, especially those here in Adams County.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Also this month, we recognize National Native American Heritage Month. It serves as a reminder to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures, traditions, histories, and important contributions of Native people. Commissioner Odeoricio, can you please make it official by reading the proclamation into the record?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. This proclamation reads, "National Native American Heritage Month, November 1st through November 30th, 2022. Whereas each year, the United States observes National Native American Heritage Month by celebrating the countless contributions of Native peoples, past and present, and honoring the influence they have had on the advancement of our nation and the state of Colorado. And whereas Adams County is situated on land once occupied by Apache, Ute, Arapahoe, and Cheyenne tribes, and whereas approximately 80,000 Native Americans live in Colorado, 55,000 living in the Denver metro area. Whereas Adams County recognizes that despite a painful history marked by unjust federal policies of assimilation and termination, American Indian and Alaska Native peoples have preserved. And whereas, we acknowledge the COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted and exacerbated pre-existing inequities facing tribal nations and can recommit ourselves in our county to advancing equity and opportunity for all American Indians and Alaska natives, and helping tribal nations overcome the challenges they have faced from the pandemic, climate change, and the lack of sufficient infrastructure in a way that reflects their unique political relationship. And whereas during Native American Heritage Month, we also honor our Native American veterans and service members who have courageously served and continue to serve in our Armed Forces, including the brave Native American coat talkers in World War I and II. For more than 200 years, Native Americans have defended our country during every major conflict and continue to serve at a higher rate than any other ethnic group in the nation. And whereas this month and every month, we honor the precious, strong, and enduring cultures and contributions of all Native Americans and recommit ourselves to fulfilling the full promise of our nation together. And whereas Adams County's A-Proud Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee exists to celebrate the diversity of our organization and our county as a whole. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, the State of Colorado proclaim November 1st through November 30th, 2022, as National Native American Heritage Month and encourage all residents to honor the rich diversity of the Native community and celebrate the many ways they contribute to our nation and society. Signed by all five Commissioners. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Odeoricio, comments from the board? Commissioner Tedesco?
I told you this is a good month for me, right? I just want you to know, you know, I was raised in a yaki home. And, you know, I think the comments from the proclamation are very true and telling, you know, for Native Americans and being banned to even speak their own language and being treated the way that they were. To come back and be a part of our Armed Forces and actually be the key to winning our battles, I think, says a lot about our society and what we can learn from. And we need to respect those differences that we have, whether it be our languages, our color of our skin, or gender. We need to make sure that we recognize those and not abuse those because our society may one day depend on one of those aspects. And this is only a telltale reminder that such an injustice can happen, will happen, but the culture and dedication of a community came through and protected us and our way of life. That being said, thank you, everyone, for recognizing this proclamation.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I would like to thank the A-Proud Group for bringing these proclamations forward to us and in our lobbies, in our buildings throughout the county. There is a banner that has the Native American Heritage Month proclamation and information regarding the month. So, I would encourage both employees and members of the public to read those. They're located throughout our lobbies in county buildings. So, thank you Commissioners for reading those proclamations this morning. Next on our agenda is public comment. Erica, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do have one person signed up today, Wayne Mueller.
Okay, Mr. Mueller, if you can come down to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Wayne Mueller. The address is 12310 East 168th Avenue, Brighton, Colorado 80602. I'd like to make comments on the conditional use permit that was granted to Aggregate Industries for the Tucson South project. The Commissioners put together a list of precedent conditions for this project because this particular company has a history in Adams County of not completing projects and not doing things as promised, including a prior cup on this particular property that they met not one condition on, and they allowed to expire. January, excuse me, September 5th was the day they were supposed to have met all of the conditions. The primary condition that had not been met on the 5th was they had to have a conveyor system operating so that they could transport gravel from the location in Adams County to the processing plant in Weld County. A notice to proceed was issued on the 18th of August based on an inspection by somebody from Public Works who has gone on record as saying he does not inspect anything but infrastructure. I presented to your staff numerous times photographic evidence that the conveyor system was not complete. It did not have belting. It did not have motors. It was not wired. The public infrastructure was supposed to have a water dewatering system. It was in the design for your tunnel under 168th Avenue. It was not installed when it was signed off. In fact, it was not installed till long afterwards. I had a meeting with staff on site on that day. That system was pumping water all above ground onto the roadways and into the ditches. Never been inspected. So, my question for the Commission is, how do you put very specific things in a cup and label them as precedent to allow mining to continue? And when they're not met, nobody stops the project? Now, this company has a long history of not doing it. I have lots of photographic evidence. I used Cora requests. I got falsely dated information on the Cora request, a picture that was supposedly the inspection used when it could not possibly have been taken until at least a month later. I have an unsigned approval letter from Public Works going to Jenny Hall. She can only act on what she gets. I understand that. It wasn't even signed until a day after she issued the notice to proceed. I have multiple copies of that letter unsigned, and the inspector begging Mr. Roush to sign it, which he did not do until a day after. I have emails on the county system of that inspector contacting the legal firm representing the Aggregate Industries.
Okay, so you're at time.
Time's up.
Okay. Thank you so much.
If you're interested, I have the information. I will be sitting right out here.
I appreciate that. I'm going to defer to the county attorney. Could you?
Yeah, can we have him hand it to the attorney?
Yeah. Mr. Mueller, if you can hand it to our county attorney right here at the front desk. Thank you. Erica, has anyone else signed up for public comment?
That was everyone.
Okay, thank you so much.
Chair, if it's all right, I know that I missed a week about two weeks ago due to COVID when we were supposed to discuss some of these items and get an update from the county attorney's office, and it's my understanding that that update didn't happen. Could I request an executive session at some point in the near future to discuss some of these items with our attorney and see if there's any update?
Do you mean this particular issue, the Tucson mine?
I do, the South Tucson mine.
Yeah, we can do that today if you'd like. I can notice that, or we can do it another time, whatever the board prefers.
I'd be happy with it today, and I'd be happy to make that motion. Would anyone else be interested?
Okay, and that would be pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 2464024B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding the Tucson Mine Conditional Use Permit.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Odeoricio?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Heidi. Next item on our agenda is elected official communication. Commissioner Odeoricio?
Yes, thank you. I just want to, as I look over the agenda today, it's a very short agenda, but it's filled with some very important things, these awards and presentations, Adoption Month, Veterans Day, and National Native American Heritage Month. Because I think this is indicative of the changes that have occurred over the past eight years, 10 years, over the course of time. Because about 10 years ago, Adams County had some policies about English-only. They were fairly exclusive, and I will tell you that I'm just proud to sit on a board that recognizes that these changes need to occur everywhere in our organization. And if you look at the difference of where we were 10 years ago compared to where we are now, we're making progress. We're not perfect, but we're going to continue making progress, and I'm just proud of the folks in A-Proud, of our staff, and the change of culture that has recognized that these things are important. So, thank you all. Thank you to the staff. Thank you to the executive leadership, and thank you to my colleagues.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other Commissioners? Not seeing any, then we're on to the consent calendar.
I don't have the voting thing up on mine. Yeah, I'm still on second.
Technical assistant.
My security blanket needs to come up.
Yeah, Erica, could you do the roll call, please?
Yep. Commissioner Odeoricio?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes. So, the consent calendar is approved five to zero. County Manager Bernal?
Good morning, Commissioners. Both items are repeats from last week's study session, so Nancy Duncan, our Finance Director, will cover them. The first one is the first reading of the 2023 Proposed Budget for Adoption.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Nancy Duncan, the Budget Finance Director for Adams County, and I'm here to present the first reading of the 2023 Proposed Budget. So that residents are aware, and a public notice of this hearing was posted in the Westminster Window and North Glen Thornton Sentinel on Thursday, October 27th. The budget team met with the SLT and ELT to discuss, there's a lot of F, there's a lot of acronyms in there, maybe I should say what they are, I'm sorry. The budget team met with the senior leadership team and also the executive leadership team to discuss full-time employees and business cases during this process. The recommended CIP projects were vetted and voted on by the CIP The recommended CIP projects were vetted and voted on by the CIP Committee. We also had working sessions with you on September 27th, October 11th, October 18th, and October 25th. This made for a very collaborative process for all parties this year. The fund balance policy we follow is that we will not use fund balance for any operational cost. Countywide, this slide shows that we have $632.6 million in operations proposed for 2023 and $86.6 million in CIP and one-time maintenance projects, and we are using $37.9 million in fund balance. For the general fund, we propose $278.6 million in operations, $20 million in CIP and one-time maintenance projects, and a use of fund balance of $16.9 million. This stays within the fund balance policy established for Adams County. In 2023, we will be opening the Adams County Public Health Department. In support of this, there will be a general fund transfer of $10 million to the newly established Health Fund. As more grant funding becomes available, we expect this transfer number to be adjusted in subsequent years. The next items coming up to complete the 2023 budget process are, November 1st, the first reading of the proposed budget. We had planned on another planning session, but we had gotten through everything in the last planning session, so today we aren't meeting on the budget. November 15th, Mark Osborne will be presenting the second reading and adoption of the 2023 Adams County budget. Also, the budget will be posted online at agcogov.org today for public review. Does anyone have any questions regarding the presentation?
Thank you so much, Nancy. Questions from the board? Not seeing any.
Okay.
Great job. Thank you.
One more.
I'll read the item. The second item is resolution authorizing third supplemental appropriations to the 2022 Adams County Government Budget.
Good morning, commissioners. Before you, as a proposed resolution authorizing the Third Amendment to the 2022 Adams County budget, this budget amendment was discussed in public study session on Tuesday, October 25th, in accordance with state statute, and so residents have the opportunity for public comment and input. Notice of this public hearing was published in the North Glen Thornton Sentinel on October 27th, 2022. The proposed resolution is authorizing total budget appropriation in the amount of $10,785,110 or $110, broken out as follows. In the general fund, it's a growth in fund balance of $6,000 or $6,515,000. In capital facilities fund, it netted to zero. In Road and Bridge Fund, it's $15 million. Waste Management Fund, $147,610. In Public Health, $2,152,500. And again, this was all discussed in public hearing last week. Do you have any questions on the amendment moving forward?
Thank you, Nancy. Questions from the board? Commissioner Odoricio? No, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, a motion by Tedesco and a second by Commissioner Pinter? And the motion passes five to zero. Thank you so much to Nancy and our budget team. Thank you, county manager. County attorney?
Good morning, commissioners. Other than the executive session that we already discussed, I do not have any other business.
Thank you so much. We don't have any land use hearings this morning, and so with no additional items on the agenda, we are adjourned at 9:59 a.m.